Welcome everybody to Bobby Talks Three Dots. My name is Robert Gifford. Those three dots are there for a reason. That means there's always more to the story. You know the role. But ladies and gentlemen, today I want to say, my fellow Americans, today we have the one, the only Austin C. City Councilman from the city of Tecumseh. Austin, how you doing buddy?
I'm doing great. How are you?
I'm doing well. I want to say first and foremost, thank you for being here. This is one of those things where it's like a couple of weeks ago, we had the first episode of the show. And we brought on, you know, a couple of my friends. They were African American. We talked about the Black Lives Matter movement, the protest, uh, you know, the riots that took place after the George Floyd, death that took place, I believe it was on the 25th. Wow, we're a month already removed from that. Um, we had that conversation. I think it's important to have, but now it's important to have these conversations at the local government level, at the state government level, and even at the federal government level about the things that we can do to actually make practical change. And that's one thing that you ran on as a, uh, an elected official is that you're here and I put it in your bio or you saw, or I saw it in your bio. You're here talking about how to make that practical change. And I think you've done a pretty good job up until this point. And I just want to say thank you so much for taking some time to be on my show before maybe one of us both blow up to a point where, uh, it's going to be harder in our schedules to, to get to conversations. So I appreciate you being here, man.
Thanks for inviting me. Honestly, let's just have fun with this.
Yeah, man, that's, that's a good point. Like, uh, the way I talk to some of my friends, sometimes it gets very somber. It's like, it feels like a funeral and to some people it is that are closer to the, you know, the front lines of these issues like it is, but I don't know how to do that from, you know, when the issues feel like they're in Heartland, Minneapolis, or, you know, Chicago or LA or all over the world. And we're here in Adrian, Michigan, or Tecumseh, Michigan, which is very, very small town compared to those places. I don't know where to start. So that's kind of why I started here with this podcast because it gives me a voice. It gives you a voice. It gives us, um, influence to kind of share our stories and see where people go with it. So I agree, man. Let's just have fun with this. So.
Uh, I will say something serious like, uh, what's been happening since 1968, when we had almost progressed as a nation. You had all these leaders, you know, uh, local, state, federal, they were all being killed. And whether that's a conspiracy or not, we, it's almost as if when our leaders, not our bosses, actual leaders in America, were being killed and being silenced, it's almost as if that movement stopped. And I think now we're finally seeing, uh, that second chance in America, like, because we have to look at how young we are relative to the entire world.
Sure, yeah.
This, this experiment that we call the United States of America.
This democracy, yeah.
And just how fast we sprung up and the way that we did it. And also the, the way that we manipulated the masses, which sounds crude, but, uh, if you look into our history, that's exactly what happened. Um, but it doesn't mean that, uh, we can't correct everything.
Right. I think that's a crucial thing to touch on is that sometimes you hear, um, especially with older generations, they are, oh, they're stuck in their ways. They're stuck in their ways. And I don't think that's a fair thing to say about anybody. We as people need to always be evolving, always be growing. Change is hard for everyone. But if you approach change with the mindset that, um, change is inevitable and I can not only improve myself at any age, um, it's okay. It changes also not, I don't want to say that every bit of change is progress, but on a grand scale of things, you know, like you said, coming from 1968 to where we are now, there has been a lot of things that are headed in the right direction, right? You know, I saw a meme on Facebook the other day where it was, uh, a protester that was protesting the, you know, Black Lives Matter movement that would have been in the 1960s and a sign said, um, something about, uh, Negro lives, something, you know, on there, but very direct, in your face type of thing. Where now today, those that oppose the Black Lives Matter movement, it's more all lives matter, right? It's that type of kind of more subtle. Not in your face. To me, I know that it's still not the correction that we want, but that's a correction in itself, right? It's that they're, 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 they're coming out. There's still these cockroaches. They're still kind of coming out, but they're coming out and they have to be a little bit more subtle with their, uh, their, help me out here with what I'm trying to say here. I guess their opposition on it. So to me, there's, there has been growth. But not to a point where we should be satisfied on a grand scale. So.
Well, with the all lives matter, I guess you could call movement. Um, I don't, I just don't see how all lives matter could be racist. It could be portrayed as racist, but I don't think the people that are saying all lives matter are blatantly racist.
Sure.
I, I think they just misunderstand the Black Lives Matter movement and.
That's fair. That's fair. Maybe when I was talking about like the cockroaches thing, it might've got tied into that. I didn't mean it in that sense, but yeah, go ahead. Sure.
But, but, um, yeah, so it, we're in a weird time where black lives matter. They do matter. And you know, that community is finally standing up for what they believe in.
Sure.
When they've been shut down through all these years and they're not stopping. And you know, they, they feel like the system has actually failed them. And it isn't, but Black Lives Matter isn't just police brutality. It has to do with systematic racism. It has to do with, you know, economic inequality. Just the way that they were, their ancestors were treated in the past and they feel, whether or not you personally would believe in reparations for the black community, we need to have that talk, you know, that discussion as to, we've, you know, they've, their ancestors, some of their ancestors were enslaved, uh, you know, from 1620 until, you know, 1865.
Which we're talking what? Four, five generations removed from that now? And it's not a lot.
No.
It's not a lot.
It's still fresh in that community's mind. And then another thing is I don't think people are really understanding how, how do I, people's grandmothers remember being ripped off of buses and kicked out of, you know, bars and restaurants.
Yeah.
So when their children are brought up, it might be slightly less painful for them and their grandchildren who are, you know, our age today.
Sure, yeah.
In their twenties and thirties, they, they are still seeing injustice.
Hearing the stories of injustice.
Yeah.
Being a byproduct of injustice. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So I think, uh, you know, change doesn't happen overnight. Just because we're seeing, uh, statues being taken down and we are seeing bad cops being fired. Uh, we're seeing some politicians speaking out saying, hey, this is actually something that we need to be discussing and we need, us as lawmakers and, and leaders, maybe we should reform police departments, the spending.
I think before you can even get to a place where like you can have real change, the Black Lives Matter movement to me starts with acknowledging just that simple statement, you know, like you were talking about black lives matter. I, I, it kind of goes back to what Germany did after the war, right? And all of the things that have taken place to get them to kind of reshape their image into the world's eye, even to 2020, right? They acknowledged the simple fact that the things that were taking place during that administration were cruel. And they, they, it didn't happen overnight. It's a generation upon a generation type fix. But in order to get to where you want to be, you have to have a level of acknowledgement. And I think that's where people might trip up. I've, I'm with you. I don't think people are necessarily, there might be some semblance of on the spectrum of people that are using the all lives matter in the wrong connotation, but their majority of human beings that use it that way, I think they genuinely believe that it, it's the right expression. It's not that all lives don't matter. It's, but you have to acknowledge that black lives matter. I've made a complete 180 on that. I remember just what, five, six years ago, when the Ferguson attacks, I believe that's when the Black Lives Matter movement first took place was six years ago. I was on the other side saying all lives matter. And it's because I fully didn't understand it. You get to a point where like, uh, that tipping point in the scale where enough is enough. Now they're, they're demanding, you know, these, these injustices be right or corrected. And I understand it now. It took me. You know, and I would never want somebody to just single me out and say that I was, you know, racist, or I was something of ill intent when I didn't, I would have never meant it that way, you know, but it's all about education, which is why I'm glad you're here today, because this is what we're doing this for. So I appreciate it. Um, before we go any further into that, man, I want to talk about kind of like your background. So you were in the Marines?
Yep.
And how, how long were you a part of that?
Served in, uh, United States Marine Corps, four years, uh, traveled the world. It was fun. Um, and actually the Marine Corps, uh, brought me closer to people that were not like me at all.
Sure, yeah.
So me being from Tecumseh, Michigan, a population of 10,000 people, 97% are white.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I don't know where I would have been today if I wouldn't have actually branched out and saw the world with, you know, friends from San Diego, uh, friends from LA, New York City, uh, sections of New York City that I've never even heard of. You know, it just all walks of life.
Sure.
And it just made me appreciate again that, that weird experiment, the United States of America, because we were all different.
Right.
But when it came down to it, we realized that even though we were all different, it was the little, it, it was honestly the little things of getting to know each other that made us actual brothers.
Right.
And, and that main goal of you're Marines and you have to do this for the Marine Corps, or, you know, the Marine Corps needs you guys to do this and.
Nothing else matters in that moment, man. It's like, uh, Jaco was talking on the Joe Rogan podcast about, it's about survival. You depend on each other for survival. You know, and, and I can, I can't imagine because I wasn't a part of the Marines, but I've never been a part of that type of, you know, selfless, just complete selflessness. Like you guys, uh, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You know, I, the stuff that we've said to you off camera, but like, and just in general, just, uh, how lucky Tecumseh is to have someone like you that has that perspective and can bring it to a 97%, you know, white community and help, um, just bring another perspective to that. Not saying that that community is tainted one way or the other. It's not. I'm just stating the fact of like bringing that perspective does help mend these conversations or at least bridge the gap a little bit. So.
It was definitely communication and something that I don't want to dig too far into Black Lives Matter.
Sure. No, no, that was just something we.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, cause I, because I still am learning.
Yeah.
So that's a big part is I, I don't, I don't always feel comfortable talking about things that I don't fully understand.
Sure.
And I'm still learning about the Black Lives Movement. Um.
Can I stop you right there though? I, I, I understand what you're saying, but like, I feel like just, just stating that statement that you just made makes it okay for you to have a conversation on it because as long as we know that it's coming from a good place, that's something I kind of touched on. In your case, it's like, I don't know, guys, educate me or help me understand your perspective. This is how I feel. This is how I see it. Maybe this is how a small group of, of people that I re, I resemble or, um, reflect see it. Maybe you guys, I think it's important to have this conversation. I really do. And those that shy away from it don't, they're not better for it because you don't learn anything from a distant. So that's, that's the thing. So that's why I, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I just mean if I, I talk about like personal opinions or something, I don't want to offend somebody because tomorrow somebody might give, you know, bring me evidence as to why I was wrong and I'm, my mind's changed. I'm sorry that I said that yesterday. But the, just the way that society works today is, uh, you know, you can't change your mind. If you change your mind, you're a quote unquote flip flopper.
A flip flopper, yeah.
So it, and I don't think that way. If you change your mind, great. Uh, and, but as long as everybody's open and communicating with each other, the same way that I communicated with African American Marines, uh, and I, I had to gain their trust. I had to let them know that I wasn't there to criticize them for them speaking about what was going on at home.
Sure.
And, and it's a big trust thing in, in this country is we have to start trusting each other and actually looking, we need to look at each other as brothers and sisters rather than strangers. And we've had leaders in the past try to preach that.
Yeah.
And you, and today it's, you're, if you're with this, you're not with this. If you're with this, you're automatically not with that. And, and it, my brain doesn't work that way. My brain goes,
Mine either.
Why can't it be a little bit of both? Why can't we make something cool out of, you know, having Black Lives Matter and All Lives Matter protesters actually talk right there?
Right in the middle. Sure.
Yelling at each other. Just you guys melt together because of us being a melting pot as a society.
Sure.
And just start talking and questioning things and gaining insight on, hey, you know, I, I lived a life like this. What type of life did you, have you lived?
Sure.
So far. And maybe then we can actually gain an understanding because let's face it, these protests and the riots, those are only going to last, you know, so many more, a certain amount of months or maybe a year. The statues, you, what happens after the last Confederate statue has fallen?
Right. What is the legs of this is what you're, you're saying. What is the legs of this? And it's the legs of the protests and the riots and the statues being pulled down isn't going to be, um, at least this is my, my, my view of seeing it is that I asked this question a couple of weeks ago on the show is that what, what is the legs of this protest? Is it just once everybody gets back to, you know, if we do get back to normal society with COVID, and everybody gets distracted by their lives again, what is the legs of this, this movement? Does it, does it have the legs that it needs to make actual change? And it doesn't necessarily mean that protest, the protest has taken place. It's done its part. It's, 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 it's made effective conversation, but now it's up to people like yourself to actually make policy changes. And that's, that's the part that I think, um, as anybody that's out there protesting in the streets or that's asking for definitive change, they need to stay on you guys as lawmakers and stay on you guys in the government section to, you know, I guess withhold and do your part. And that's not always easy because like you said, there's always different walks of life, especially inside of government and different perspectives. So.
But so a place like Tecumseh is unique.
Yeah, tell me about it.
I mean, well, you've seen Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I used to work at Park and Rec.
That is true. Robert, Park and Rec.
I did for about four years. I enjoyed my time there. I, uh, I heard good things about what they're doing now through you. Um, I tried to stay in touch with them as much as I can, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Contact Sarah Gilmore. She's great.
She is. I agree.
Our Parks Director is awesome. Um, you know, just Tecumseh, everybody jokes that's seen, everybody that's seen Parks and Rec has joked, we're Eagle Town.
From Parks and Recreation, you're the other town.
We're the other town, the snobby people. So.
Well, to be fair, I remember when I was working there, there was a Facebook group that might still exist and you don't even have to comment on this because I don't want to put you in trouble. But there was like the Real Housewives of Tecumseh and I remember being, um, from Adrian, going into Tecumseh every day. That was something that was the butt of one of my jokes quite a few times. So you don't have to acknowledge that anymore. I'll, I'll let you off the hook there, but, uh, yeah, that's a real thing. So, uh, go ahead though. So tell me about Tecumseh. Tell me what it's like to be a city councilman, especially a young city councilman in, in Tecumseh to, uh, we were talking off camera a little bit about, first of all, having a voice, you know, proving yourself and just talk about your journey a little bit. How long you've been there, um, so far?
I have, I've been on city council for two years.
Okay.
I believe maybe a little over two years. Um, but yeah, a few years ago, I, I just started going to city council meetings and I was the only one sitting there and they were passing, you know, multimillion dollar budgets on things and which were, because I would look into the budgets and I would look into certain budget amendments later.
Sure.
Um, just the way that they were spending money. It was appropriate. It was just, I was curious as to how nobody in the city would come, even though these meetings are public and they are put, you know, they're putting the newspaper, they're on social media. They're just, they're everywhere. They're posted on the website.
Sure.
So I'm the only one sitting in the audience.
You were the only one. Do you know that, you know how weird that must be for them on the other side? As you, well, now you know, but on the other side, looking into an empty audience where you're almost like playing government, it feels like, because nobody's really listening to you in that moment. But yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, it, it was really weird, but, um, just one day I started really thinking about it. Had no experience.
Sure.
Uh, never worked in government besides Marine Corps. Uh, and just them being older and a lot wiser and you became this blonde kid, blonde haired, blue eyed kid that would walk in every other Monday. Hey, how's it going, Mr. Mayor and Council? You know, we started to bond a bit and every now and then, uh, they would ask for input if I saw them walking or they would stop by and see me at Basil Boys.
Really? Okay. So they would genuinely be interested in your, your, your point of view before you were even into the, okay, cool.
So they, they would ask, um, like, in this situation, like what would you do? Or, uh, do you think this is appropriate spending for, you know, refurbishing, you know, cop car? Should we buy a new cop car this year because technically this one is over a hundred thousand miles and, uh.
Which in its own right, I think is what shows that they have a great, um, sense of leadership because they're, they're not just making blanket, you know, decisions without talking to the public. And in that case, you're the public buddy. You're the one that's there. So I mean, that's good that they're, they're asking for feedback on things. So good for them.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, obviously they talk to the other people besides me, but, uh, yeah, I, I ran and I lost. That's, that's what people forget now.
Yeah.
And I always think it's funny because.
Give me, give me some context. What year was that that you ran and lost?
Twenty seventeen or that'd be, might've been 2018 then.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now.
It was 2018.
Okay. So now, uh, this bright eyed blonde haired guy, he suffers defeat and, uh, and go from there.
So, uh, Gail Kaiser was a councilwoman that served and as I had just lost and I felt so defeated and I didn't know what to do. I, I thought, you know, Tecumseh was ready for this young guy and everybody knew me and you know, Austin's back from Marine Corps. This is great.
Yeah.
Still working government. Well.
Little ego on this one, huh?
And then I, and then I lose, but then two weeks later, uh, Gail Kaiser, uh, Councilwoman Gail Kaiser, she steps down. No, just because she wanted to move back to her hometown in Indiana or Illinois.
Really? Okay.
And I, and after that, I submitted an application for an appointment. Um, and there was two other, two other, uh, Tecumseh residents that filed for that appointment and they chose me. And I, I honestly, I don't want to speak too much about myself, but I think.
Boast, boast away. Don't be too humble. Boast away.
But I think they actually saw the passion in my eyes for, you know, local government.
Sure.
I don't think the other two, uh, applicants, uh, had those.
Yeah. Same admirations, you know?
Yeah, just, and I just really wanted to help. I look at local government as a community service. It's the ultimate community service. Cause what you vote on and the things that you come up with directly impact your constituents.
Yes.
Because you live with them.
Yes. And is that, so is there something to be said then about a crowd at a, you know, you said you would go to these meetings on Mondays and there's nobody there. But yet there's such a rage, you know, in politics today on both sides that there's this big interest in national politics, but things that actually play a direct impact on these, these constituents' lives, they don't seem to even have a clue that they're taking place. And I, I'll, I'll be the first to admit, I have absolutely zero idea what's going on in Adrian. So maybe you've inspired me to check that out a little bit more is that, I don't know, you know, I'm too busy going out about my everyday life and that the only time at the end of the day, if the price of food goes up, I complain about it or, you know, it's like, whatever really hurts the pocketbook is what gets your attention first. And unless you see that, you don't really know what's going on. So what do you think the disconnect is there? Why, why are we wired this way? Is it just because it's a, um, entertainment thing first, national politics?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what it is?
Oh, it definitely is because now, now that people ask me questions about President Trump. They asked me questions about Senator Biden. They asked me who I'm voting for.
Sure.
It's none of your business.
Yeah, it's a private thing.
It's not my business to know who you're voting for. Just whoever you believe in, vote for them. I, that, that's the American thing to do.
Right.
Uh, and I'm just so concerned with what's going on in Tecumseh that I don't have time to look up what President Trump said today. And even though I did, he, when he made remarks about Detroit, I was just a bit upset, but.
Sure.
I mean, he's, that's just how he is. He's an angry New Yorker and I completely understand whether I agree or disagree with his statements. It's not my business dealing with any of that. My, I should be focused on Tecumseh and Tecumseh only. I shouldn't be dealing with, you know, state politics, federal politics.
Sure.
And I think because of that entertainment of, you know, he said this, she said that, uh, you know, they're abortion bad, abortion good. What do we do with, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement now that it's at our front doorstep?
Right.
Um, and everything's political now. And then you have people like me, Austin C. going, hey, do you guys want to talk about road funding? And everyone's like, no, that's not, that's not cool. Like it's not exciting to talk about how we spend our money on roads.
Sure.
But I want better roads.
But there's gotta be, I, I don't want to misguide the, the viewers here though. There's gotta be some semblance of conversation that does take place even at the local government level about, okay, because I know there's been protests here in Adrian. Okay. How to prepare for that? What to do if it does turn into something more, or if it, it gains masses? Like, tell me like, what are some of the conversations that do take place on a subject like an all lives matter, or not even all lives matter, a black lives matter movement? Tell me some of the conversations that you guys have, um, just based on what could happen in Tecumseh or what your role is in, is in Tecumseh with your constituents. Is it one of those things where, uh, because you're 97% white that you don't, you don't feel it's a, a topic of conversation? Like I would feel that that still would take place.
Oh, it has.
So, so give me a little insight on that.
So we, we actually had a Black Lives Matter protest.
Great. Sure.
Um, in downtown Tecumseh and I mean, don't quote me on it, but I think there were roughly 300, maybe 400 people that, that joined that protest and it was peaceful. The police were fine. Um, which, uh, that, that is a weird one too, that I think about because, uh, I have a lot of friends that are police officers.
Me too.
A lot of friends that happen to be, you know, African Americans.
Me too. Yep.
There's me in the middle going, hey, like I'm with Black Lives Matter, but like police officers, I definitely care about you guys because you're my brothers too.
Sure. And, and, but I think you're, you're touching on like the extremes point of views because those that are for Black Lives Matter, you know, you said a couple of weeks on my show is that there are good cops. There's more good cops than there are bad cops. What we want done is that we want the good cops to now start alarming the bell about the bad cops instead of just idly standing by while a bad cop does something so horrible. That's where the system needs to be reformed in my opinion is that instead of conforming to because of years of service versus another guy's years of service, or you're uncomfortable because you're the new kid on the block or whatever. And that's what made that interest or that, that situation with George Floyd so interesting because you have diversity with all police officers there and the four that were there. Um, I think you had what? Two white, you had one Asian and then one that was an African American, right?
Yeah.
And then you had one guy that had double digit years of service and then another guy that was what? First, second day on the job. So there's a lot to be taken in and just that one issue. So, um, yeah, man, I, I'm with you. I, I'm glad that you guys had a conversation about it.
Yeah. Um, so with Black Lives Matter, I mean, because of where we live and the, the fact that we don't necessarily have, we have problems.
Sure.
Every community has problems, but we don't have those problems that, uh, metropolitan areas have.
Sure. Because they're more diverse.
Exactly.
Right.
And so I, I mean, we, our police give out speeding tickets.
Yeah.
They don't usually, there's every now and then a police officer is on a heavy duty call.
Right.
Where drugs are involved or somebody does have a weapon, you know, or something, just something really bad happened in the house and they have to be the first witness to it.
Right.
And so.
Which imagine the stresses of that.
Yeah.
I, I, I feel like sometimes that's getting overshadowed right now is that people, um, especially with conversations in, out of Minneapolis about defunding the police department. And it sounds to me like a whole lot of semantics when they've, some of the things they've come up with, the new name and the new amendment that they've put out. Uh, it feels a lot like a police department, just with a new title, but, um, not, not to kind of rabbit trail off on that. The thing about, um, about local government though, even in your, your constituents being 97% white or not as diverse as you would, like you said, in the metropolitan areas. A, a police officer should still have, um, preparation for anybody that may come in and out of the city. Um, any incident that could take place, you know, it's not, it's not fair to say that they're going to be prepared for every incident. However, there should be some type of uniform addressed to every citizen. And I think as long as, even if a, I think it speaks volumes that if, if the local government at a, at a city like Tecumseh, who is 97% white, is preparing and taking this serious, then it, it gives you hope for some of these other areas in the world, you know, or in the, in this, uh, the, the, the country, that they're doing the same thing. You know, if small towns Tecumseh have their, has their shit together, then why can't Chicago, Detroit, LA, there's, their problems are amplified in magnitude, but at least it gives them a kind of a template of what to do. So I don't know. I, I wanted to talk on that. I'm glad you touched on it. I want to know.
Well.
Go ahead. You want to give more?
Yeah. Uh, something I completely forgot before all of this happened, we had this talk.
Okay.
And it, it's kind of funny. It's coming back to me, but yeah, it was when I, I was probably six months into city council.
Okay.
And I talked to, uh, our city manager and I spoke to our chief of police. And we, we just had conversations about, well, exactly what's going on and also active shooter drills and de-escalation drills. And how to prepare better if something like that should happen in Tecumseh.
Sure.
How would the, would the police be trained and ready to actually use tools other than weapons?
Right.
And we had that talk. Yeah. But like a year and a half ago, and yeah, we, we're working on that. But you know, all of this happened and
Within that timeframe. Yeah.
I don't want to rush it.
Sure.
Because it takes money and it, you know, it takes a little bit more funding.
Well, it goes back to the old saying of like putting lipstick on a pig type thing. You don't want to just throw money at something just to put a Band-Aid on it. That doesn't actually solve the long-term problem. So yeah, I, I totally agree with you, man. Like, uh, me being a school teacher, I appreciate that you guys do have those conversations on, especially in active shooter drills. Um, things within the, the, the school. Um, it's a very, It's hard at times to get the student body to understand the, um, kind of the volume of it, Of the practice, you know, because it's like, oh, we've got an active shooter drill. You know what I mean? It's a part of their mundane, everyday life type thing, right? But it's so crucial. It's so crucial that they understand what to do if something was to happen. And it's like you as a teacher, you kind of have to, Um, perform a little bit, right? You kind of have to set the table that says, hey, this is a, a real thing that could take place. Hell, it's taking place. Uh, there's a local school district. I'm not going to give the name, but there's a local school district that within 10 miles of where I teach that Had real issues with this and, uh, they've done the right things since then to Put the steps in process for hopefully to not to happen, but you never know. There's too many variables in a school, too many variables in this world and that's human beings. We all present a different variable. So I, I, I wanted to kind of touch on some other things because obviously Black Lives Matter movement is huge. It's the number one trending thing in the world according to every site, Yahoo, Twitter, you name it, it is. Um, But obviously coronavirus, how is a small town like Tecumseh? Who might be on the benefit side of, um, numbers? You know, it seems like we're still keeping things out of bay right now, but this could influx overnight. If somebody was to have an irresponsible party or whatever it might be, what does Tecumseh do with an issue like COVID?
Uh, what we're doing is going off of every mandate that the state has given us. And it's day to day. I know as much as you and that's just a fact.
Frustrating.
Because one day something works and the next day it doesn't work because we found out the day before When they said it worked, that it actually doesn't because this is a whole new realm. This is something that we haven't dealt with in a long time. There were no protocols for anybody.
On a global scale, there is nobody here right now that was, is prepared to handle that.
Exactly. So I don't blame anybody for what they did or didn't do during this virus. Because I don't think they actually knew what to do.
Is it fair though to say that completely when there were warning signs from people of influence, you know, four or five years ago stating that This could happen, not necessarily understanding what this is, but like, you know, stating that maybe we take it a little more serious. And then leadership now comes in and defunds those types of platforms that were put in place. Isn't there, I mean, isn't it fair to say that there is a certain level of blame that could be put on something like that? I'm not even saying give names. I'm just talking about the idea Of this could never happen and just throwing it to the wayside to save a dollar or two when, I mean, the timing of this whole thing too is just crazy. But isn't there something to say that you can put a little blame on something when that took place?
If you want, you can, but I, I don't. I will say this, Americans in general, I think they're bulletproof. They don't think that what happens.
That's a fair statement. Yeah.
I mean, they just don't think that anything that happens on a global scale is going to affect them. So when, when you have doctors trying to tell politicians, lawmakers that, hey, We're kind of due for a big virus to spread. Uh, and we're kind of tracking viruses in, uh, in Asian countries. Uh, there were a couple, a couple of African countries. Now that was, that was Ebola.
Yeah.
But I mean Ebola, they, they, so Ebola was a big thing. When was that? Twenty sixteen?
Uh, maybe sixteen, seventeen, right around then. Yeah.
So, okay. You have Ebola and we were taking that seriously. And nothing really came of it. And then coronavirus happens four years later and they just, our lawmakers said, whoa.
But don't you think a lot of it though is like, it's issue, the, the issue is, is that first of all, Where do I want to go with this? Um, I look at it from a leadership. I wrote down leadership on my piece of paper, nice and big. So you can see it. And when I talk about leadership, I'm not even talking about Donald Trump. I'm not talking, I, 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 I am talking about Donald Trump, but like, I'm not referring just to Donald Trump. I'm talking about Nancy Pelosi. I'm talking about the WHO, the CDC, all the misinformation that came out, the seemingly corrupted WHO or not, it's hard to know, you know, when you have, Uh, when it feels like sometimes like I, I don't want to go down the road of like, you know, WHO in China. Okay. Cause it seems like sometimes they didn't want to put out all the information. But the issues are when your leadership gets tested and they should from time to time and they get tested. To, to say that like, um, like this is that moment where you're, you're, you're going to be reelected Or you're going to be, you're going to be, um, kind of judged on how you perform during this time. To me, it's not necessarily about being right about the coronavirus. It's about giving the right information to the public in the way that you know how and admitting We don't know enough about this right now. So I remember when Nancy Pelosi came out and she said, hey, you guys need to continue on as your life, but not just continue on. Go to those places. That's a, that's a nightmare leadership thing to say. You know what I'm saying? And then you take the other side of the aisle and someone like a Donald Trump and you have someone saying that, You know, making, um, I, uh, pick one, pick one, you know, hydroxychloroquine type of thing. When you're making these statements that he's really not in a position to stay, but those are the easy bait ones, right? Those are the easy ones to throw out there. The bottom line is though, is that why can't a leader come out and say, you know what? This is new. We need to, we need to, you know, um, give ourselves more time to gather information because we don't really know what this is yet. Why can't they come out and deliver those types of things? I mean, criticized or not, be damned or not, that's what good leadership should do is that I'm not telling you to stop living your life as normal. Just be cautious that this does exist. It could be here. We need to gather more time. Like why can't a leader say that and not be, Why did, why do they get condemned for that type of leadership? Or, and if they don't, then why aren't there more people that, that execute that type of leadership? Why is it this, uh, we're invincible type mentality? Like you said, that we're bulletproof and that we must always showcase that. I mean, the guy was elected on the very, that very nature, but does that make him a good leader? That's the question. Not just him, just in general, that type of, you know, march on, you know, mentality. I don't, I don't think that does. And I don't understand why there's not more people like yourself acquiring information And then delivering and making decisions at a later date when you know what it is that you're actually trying to tackle. Why do you, why do you think that is? Why is there not more leaders like that?
Politics.
Okay. That's, that's an answer.
You don't. I think with everything going on, you're about to see more people like me run for office. People that are in the middle that want to listen to everybody and consider every option before making a decision and Where the people like me are the ones admitting that, hey, I'm wrong. Like I told you, Black Lives Matter. I don't, I don't know enough about it to really have Any opinions on it, public opinions on it, because I still need more education.
You're just listening.
And I have to, and this is their time to speak and get all that frustration out and It's my job to sit here as a white man and listen and understand and empathize with that movement. That's my job. My job isn't to go out there and preach and shout with them and, you know, my job is to support them. Um, and just let them know that I love them. And, and so I, I think that's what we're lacking in leadership in the United States of America. And I, I, I don't dabble too much into the federal politics, but, but when you look at, When you look at the left and right and how, how they try to manipulate bills that they want to turn into laws.
And they, they leverage it.
And they'll add something that they know the other party's not going to like. And so they're not going to vote on it.
And then they can blame it on them for not voting on it. Yeah.
Hey, this, they didn't vote on a veterans bill, but they didn't tell you the veterans bill also had like something like a pro abortion that Republicans don't like.
Right.
Republicans don't like veterans. They didn't vote for my bill and
That's the headline, man. That's the clickbait.
You didn't put anything, you put more things in there that they, they didn't agree with. Like it's same with Republicans. They do it to liberals.
Sure.
And so here I am in my head going like, I, I don't look into the entertainment of politics. I just, I read the bills that are coming up. Uh, and there's a few interesting ones actually that, uh, that are about to be introduced to the house and, uh, Two of them just passed the house regarding, uh, coronavirus.
Okay.
And tracing like
With, with technology?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get into an area now. Go ahead.
That, yeah, but, uh, But I think you're going to see more people like me going, okay, is this common sense? Like, is it going to help the majority of Americans? Because what I'm seeing is when, when there's a Democrat sponsored bill in, in DC And ninety nine percent of Democrats vote yes on it and one percent of Republicans vote no on it. Was it really a good bill? Same with the Republican backed bill. If ninety nine percent of Republicans back it and one percent of Democrats back it, Clearly not a good bill. And that's happening too often now where why isn't it fifty three to forty seven percent?
And I think about the man hours that go into putting those bills together. Somebody's working really, really hard to do those types of things.
Those are the staffers.
Those are the staffers. And the issue is, is that they're working really, really hard just so that the people, their bosses can position themselves. Because they're not, they have no interest in that bill passing. They just want it written so that they can, you know, use it as leverage against the other person. Now, Here's the issue I have. I, I genuinely don't believe in a blanket type of statement against everybody, right? Let me ask you this question. All right. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Let's see where you go with this. Are, um, cops more good or more bad?
More good.
Okay. Politicians, more good or more bad? Because they get the same blanket statement, right?
I know, but maybe I shouldn't have said.
No, no, I'm not saying you said anything. I'm just asking because it's a question I have.
Wow. More, more bad.
More bad than good. So this is eye opening to a guy like me. This is eye opening to a guy like me because I do generally give everybody the benefit of the doubt. Come from a more optimistic range of perception. Um, so when you say that, that, that a guy from the inside now, um, That, that's, um,
You can't say I know politicians. I also don't know a lot of cops. I know cops, you know, my friends that happen to be cops, but I don't know a massive amount of cops. So me just saying more cops are more good than bad. I mean, that's not really fact based at all. Same with politicians.
But no, but isn't it a philosophy that you should, I mean, The, I think anytime you as a politician or you as a, somebody who is interested in making change. Okay. And in this case, you're somebody who's interested in making change. Now, I, I follow this thing called the brain state model. Are you aware of this?
No.
Okay. There's three different types of models as people that we try to, that exist. There is the survival state of mind. There's the emotional state of mind, which is where majority of human beings live. And then there's the executive state of mind. Okay. I would say that you're somebody that lives in the executive state of mind and I'll, I'll explain what these are. Survival state of mind is the person that wakes up every day and says, uh, I need to eat. I'm cold. I need a, I need a sweater, right? Those people exist. We probably know a few of them in our lives, but, uh, that's the survival state of mind. They're literal. Every waking moment is just to, um, pursue feeding those types of, um, needs. Okay. Now, a conversation can be had whether or not those people are even able to comprehend deeper thinking and more critical thinking. That's a conversation that can be had. I'm not making a, a decision on that. I'm just telling you what exists. Then there's the emotional state of mind. And this is where we've got to get past as a people, especially leadership. And this is the reason I have you on the show today. Emotional state of mind is, and it's, it's being perpetuated and amplified by every media platform that exists. Um, clickbait exists like you were just talking about, you know, sliding things in the bills that have nothing to do with veterans, but yet That, that way the media will then say, uh, Republicans don't care about veterans or vice versa. It's clickbait. And it seems that, uh, a lot of our, um, big network industries have now, uh, subscribed to this type of, Um, way of doing things unfortunately, because what it does is, is it then enrages the consumer, the constituent, the, The you and me's of the world, right? We see these things and we say, oh, Republicans don't care about, you know, uh, veterans. Well, therefore screw them. I'm not voting for them.
I didn't like them anyways.
I didn't like them anyways.
Proof now that I have that they were bad.
You validated all of my reasons, right?
Yeah.
But that's what it is. And that's where majority of people live. And that's because may, whether it be the day to day of people's lives are too busy to actually get to a point where they need to educate themselves. But the emotional human being only wants affirmation. They don't want information. They want to tell, they want to watch TV or watch a news network to tell them what they already feel so that they don't feel uncomfortable, right? That's the emotional state of mind. The executive state of mind is somebody who takes in all the information, Tries to remove all of his emotions from it, which is very hard to do. And I, I, I tend to think I'm somewhere between the emotional state of mind and executive. And I can get into reasons why I don't ever want to fully be executive because I think you miss the human touch. Um, but I do know people that are currently trying to achieve The executive state of mind where they just get information and they make decisions based off facts. That is, seems like a noble pursuit. It's a philosophy that more people should apply to, you know? And I just feel like, um, somebody in, in your area, even though You're, you're, you're listening to people and you're, you're, you're taking on Tecumseh and all the things that come with it. I, I do think it's okay to sit there and say that, um, you feel that there's more good politicians than there are bad, or there's more good cops than, I know you didn't say that. I'm saying just in general.
Yeah.
So I think it's okay to have that philosophy. I, I really do because you have to approach it from what you, Austin C knows. Let me ask you this. Do you find it's difficult to remove Austin C, the personal opinions from Austin C, the city councilman? Or are they two in one the same?
Uh, they're pretty much the same. I mean, And it's, it's kind of funny. You brought up the executive mindset because that's something I've always, I, you're right. I mean, and I, and I've had problems with this in the past of, uh, Gaining, putting human emotion into Just into life itself. Cause I am very fact based with things. And when it comes to decision-making, uh, statistically, I'm usually right, but There's also all these rogue elements that I don't consider sometimes. And, and I've, I've been working on kind of becoming more like you. And the fact that, yeah, you need to be in the middle of executive and emotional where you need to have that human experience while you're making decisions.
I think it's relatable, right?
Yeah. Like you have to have empathy and some, you know, and that's a problem that I have, but I have been working on it. Um, and so I don't know how to explain it. When it comes to ordinances and bills and laws and politics and, uh, just the way our governments do work. And that's why I don't really, That's why I don't really argue about the entertainment side of politics.
Yeah.
Because that's that human element with the reactions and who likes who and who's mad.
It's exhausting.
I don't, yeah, I, I have no patience for that. So I just don't even get into any of that. I want to know what I can read that's going to, Where am I going to gain more, more knowledge?
Sure.
Where, who's going to change my mind on this? And, uh, When it comes to making decisions in local government, yeah, Austin sees doing it. I don't just turn it off. As soon as the meeting's over, I go back to being city councilman Austin still.
Sure.
So, and, but I, I have had a problem with not, you know, with lacking empathy and human emotion and decisions.
Just basing it solely off of the facts that you're given, right?
Yeah. And I, and I, I look for facts all over the place because what if somebody spread false information that I believed? And here's something to counter that. And that's actually what, what was right. And I believe something that was wrong. So you have to, it,
So tell me about that. I mean, how do you count, how do you combat that? I mean, because it feels like to me, sometimes in this country, You'll have, especially with the Black Lives Matter movement, right? You'll have perception versus reality. A lot of times you'll have people that will try to say, yeah, that's their perception, but the reality is this, right? You've heard those arguments? And it's like, okay, well, first of all, who's your source? Who are you citing? You know, I, I, I'm not going to go down the road with all those statistics, but That, that's kind of the issue, right? Is that how do you combat when you know the facts? Because you're on the inside of Tecumseh. Let's just keep it to Tecumseh. You know, the facts of Tecumseh, right? And somebody who's in the emotional state of mind, who might have more influence. who might have more influence than an Austin C in that city, right? Comes out aggressively and says, no, damned his facts. He's wrong. This is what it is. And because most people are in that emotional state of mind, they are now raged by what, you know, they think is the reality. But in general, it's actually the perception. How would you combat something like that?
With love.
Would it be effective?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's an honest answer. Yeah, that's an honest answer.
I would rather do that than also be combative because I'm just not that type of person. I, if if somebody honestly came at me in a combative state and they were highly emotional. You just have to look at him and say, hey, whatever I did wrong, just please come, come to me and just sit down and talk to me and speak openly about whatever you think is going on and then let me explain myself. And the way to do that is just go have dinner with the guy or, you know, go grab a beer with him or just hang out from it. And you know, something that I learned too is before you even start having those discussions, start talking about your personal life. Hey, work was kind of rough today, but I got to go home, like hang out with my dogs and, you know.
Oh, you have a dog? Great. I have a dog too.
Right? Oh, my dog's name, Kate, they're Katie and Callie. What's your dog's name? And then you start a conversation with that rather than debating right off the bat. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And so that's it because that has happened before and I, and I've, and it was a constituent that was uh upset with marijuana because we, we banned the sale.
Sure.
And, and Adrian didn't.
Right.
And it, it was solely on the fact that I'm pro, pro marijuana, but are we looking at this in a, in an actual sense of where, where do we go from the future? Because this is when executive mentality comes out of, oh,
Right.
Did the state of Michigan create any laws regarding zoning where you could build the buildings and how much marijuana they could have? Because it's illegal federally, they, it's cash only, you know.
You do it properly and you're, you're in the process of doing it properly, but me, I just want the sale of it, right? The, not me personally, but yeah.
And so that, and so I had to explain to him, like it was, I was twenty five. Twenty five year old kid that like, yeah, I'm not, like, younger people are a lot more liberal when it comes to drugs. Eh, it's, it's just a thing. And marijuana, first of all, marijuana even being federally categorized under some of the drugs that it's categorized under. It's like, okay, I think we need younger people to get in there.
Yeah.
And change that.
With time, it will. With time, it will. It's inevitable.
But it's, but you know, that was, that was one of those um talks that I had where he came at me combative, like wa- like why? Like, I don't understand and you're supposed to be younger and progressive. I'm like, whoa, 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 whoa.
Yep.
Like you're coming at me with the wrong tone. And I, and I told him, I said.
Right away, you guys are on the wrong end. Hold that. All right, we're here. Bobby Talks dot, dot, dot. Always more to the story. Still sitting with uh city councilman Austin C. We were talking about being combative uh against perception and reality of uh, you know, any issue out there. And I was just asking uh our councilman here what he would do or how he would combat um uh people's perception versus when he knows the reality of a situation. When those two differ in contrast, how would he combat it? And he said he would use love. Pick up back on that where we were at. We're going to finish up here. We got about five, six minutes left. Just tell me where you're at, Austin. Tell me what you think with that.
No, I just think uh how emotional people are today, whether it's wrong or right. I have no place to say it because it's your own personal life, uh whether you're emotional or not. Um, but if you would like to talk to me, I don't deal with anger or aggression towards me.
Right. And you were telling about, you were talking about that dinner about how it got very uh combative early and you said, hey, you're approaching me the wrong way.
Yeah, it's in, you know, just speaking about your personal life and uh bringing them to the, the literal, you know, uh, practical table. Just talking about things that you agree with that aren't political or aren't about the city or uh just things that you have in common.
Sure.
Even though you were strangers, now you have three things that are in common because you opened up to them when they were ang- angry with you just a few hours ago and didn't know who you were.
Imagine if you had that type of conversation with them every single time, you'd learn three new things and three new things and keep going, yeah.
And you build a relationship.
Sure.
Or, and then they might, because they start to pick up on who you actually are. I'm Austin C. Yeah, I happen to serve on city council, but I also like to run. I like to go swimming. Uh.
Big hockey fan.
Yeah, huge hockey fan, you know, and then, then they're not, they're not labeling you with one thing. You're, you're a bunch of different things and then.
It becomes harder.
But they understand you at that. Then they start to understand just the way I would start to understand why they're thinking differently than me.
Sure.
And then, then we stop yelling or, you know, they stop yelling because I would never yell. That's just unprofessional. But but it just comes down to communication. We have to actually start communicating on issues that are hard.
Sure.
And even the small things like when Tecumseh decided to ban the sale of marijuana and people were upset. We had to communicate with them and let them know.
The reasons why.
Yeah, the reasons why we weren't allowing it right now.
Right.
And we had to, we had to let our community, well, we wanted them to understand you know, why we took that direction and why Adrian didn't.
Sure.
And because that was a big, that was a big point. Uh, and we just basically had to tell them like, that's a completely different entity. They make their own decisions. It's their city. That's the reason why they're there and we're here.
Yep.
And, and it got, and it, and it had gotten to the point where a few people did frustrate me and I knew they were heckling me just to test my character. And I, and I did, I finally said, if you really disagree with me that hard on this one issue, run against me.
Sure, yeah.
Because that, that doubt is a great politic, you know, if you, that's exactly what I did.
You'll find out where you stand. Either, either I'll be wrong and more people are like you or you'll be wrong and more people are like me. So I totally get that.
And hopefully the community's better off.
Yeah, and that's a great thing. You know, it's like I, Austin, there's so many similarities with the way I approach just the kids in the school. You know, I, I'm a person that's in an authority position there and I have um, I have influence. But it's not something that you just are given on day one, right? You have to walk the halls and say, hey, Joe Schmo, how was your weekend? How was, how's mom doing? You have to learn about these kids and especially teaching at a small school. We've had a high turnover of principals and superintendents over my five years of being there to a point where when these, you get these different ideologies, these gunslingers or these soft listeners. You know, and somewhere in between. And if a gunslinger is going to come in and try to just start disciplining a child, they're going to be like, who the hell are you? I've seen fifteen of you in my, you know, my eight years of being here. So you're a nobody to me. I'm going to continue to make your life hell because you'll be gone next year. More times than not, that's the case. Uh, so me being a teacher, but the dean and the athletic director, I kind of in that, that kind of, that constant. And I have, I have a say within the building now in the administration because I have such influence on those kids that might give others, you know, more issues because I've taken the time to listen to them. So that's always my advice when I talk to the administration, when they come in is less is more early. Don't try to change everything overnight. Listen to these kids. And then when you have a relationship, then you can use your influence to at least get them to try to correct their behavior along the way. So a lot of good things on the show today. Austin, I'm very, very happy you're here, man. Um, I can't say thank you enough. I really, really hope that.
This is fun.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that man, ten years from now, you have the same perspective that you have now. I hope that uh the game doesn't um hinder you or make you jaded in any way. Uh, I would love to have you back on um in way before ten year mark, but I appreciate you being here, man.
Yeah, thank, thank you for having me. This was wonderful and uh hopefully for, oh, yeah, I keep forgetting we're actually on camera.
Yeah, there's a camera right there, yeah.
For the people that are watching, uh hopefully, you know, this hopefully we start learning about ourselves as individuals in the future. And uh when we start learning about ourselves, I think uh we can start progressing as, as a country because we keep grouping each other into these, into actual groups. And when we start understanding everybody is who they are and how everybody's different and everybody has their own brain. How everybody's thinking different things and not one person is the same as this, you know, the person sitting next to them. Uh, when we finally realize that, then we can start progressing. And we just got to keep the lines open and we have to constantly communicate.
Well said, Ben. Well said. I uh, yeah, we'll just end it there. Um. This has been Bobby Talks, three dots. Always more to the story. Uh, next week's episode, we will have Nate Adams, the one and only, the real critic. Uh, I want to take this short little uh moment to say, uh right now, there's a lot of information with the COVID nineteen mask or not to mask. You need to make a decision for yourself, but don't put anybody else in jeopardy. So we'll see you down the road. Appreciate the journey. Love you guys. See you.